Well, good evening, everybody. Thank you for coming. It's a beautiful night and maybe one of our last nice nights of the season, so we really appreciate you coming. My name is Barb Ferguson. I'm the president of the League of Women Voters of the Holland area. I welcome you to tonight's candidate forum. We're proud to have this opportunity for voters in Sagatuck to learn more about the individuals who are running for city council. The League of Women Voters is a strictly nonpartisan organization that encourages informed and active participation in government. The League never supports or opposes individual candidates. We do take stands on issues that we've studied. The League is open to all people to become members, both men and women, and for more information about the League, you can check our website, lchwolland.org. One of the League's most important goals is to assist voters in making informed choices at the polls. Therefore, we bring you tonight's program. We have three candidates running for city council. With us tonight, Holly Anderson, Russ Gardner, and Logan White. A fourth candidate, Garnett Lewis, has withdrawn her candidacy. The following is a statement that she has sent to us. "Vicky and I have always wanted a bit more room so we could host family and friends. Rather than actively looking, we were waiting for the right opportunity to present itself. While we hoped we might find a place within this city, we are happy with the home that we have settled on in the township. It has been my absolute honor to serve the city of Sagatuck since moving here in 2015. I think we can all be very proud of the recent city accomplishments, and I anticipate many more as a result of the fine professional staff and strategic planning processes implemented by the city council." Garnett's name will still be listed on the ballot. Absentee ballots are now available and have been mailed to those who requested them already. Questions for the candidates have been gathered from the public and from League members through our website and Facebook page. Now, at this time, I would ask everyone to turn off your cellphones and any other electronic devices. No cameras or recorders are permitted, other than those authorized by the League. This program, which will be live streaming on our YouTube channel, will also be recorded and available for viewing within a few days of the event. You can find it on our YouTube channel, or a link will be on our website. The video is the property of the League of Women Voters, Holland area. Neither video nor audio clips may be copied, edited, or used for any political advertising or other purposes. We ask members of the audience to listen respectfully and to refrain from any comments or reactions as the candidates are speaking. There will be an opportunity to applaud for the candidates at the end of the forum. Our moderator for this evening's forum is League member and past president Paula Lewison. Paula will outline the format, review the rules, and lead tonight's forum.
Paula?
Thank you.
Good evening. The format for the forum has been established by the League of Women Voters, Holland area, and was received and reviewed by the candidates prior to the forum. Each candidate will have the opportunity to make opening statements, not to exceed two minutes. Candidates will speak in alphabetical order first and rotate order thereafter. The timekeeper, Claudia Berry, will hold up a card, demonstrate please, to indicate 30 seconds remaining, and the card indicating "stop" when the time has expired. When the time is up, the candidate may finish only that sentence, and if you have the answer before your time is up, that's fine, too. The League of Women Voters, Holland area, provides this forum as an opportunity for candidates to express their views related to their candidacy. Statements expressed by the candidates are not endorsed nor opposed by the League. Also, the League of Women Voters does not certify any candidate's responses to the questions as accurate. Voters are encouraged to fact-check information shared at the forum. Following their opening statements, all candidates will be answering written questions submitted by the public and League members. Candidates may not make personal attacks or comments about other candidates; such attempts will be cut short. As moderator, I manage the forum and reserve the right to close discussion on a question. Each candidate will have up to one minute to answer the questions. We will rotate the first person to answer the question, and at the end, each candidate will have an opportunity to make two-minute closing statements in reverse order of the opening statements. All questions will be directed to all candidates; no questions will be directed to individual candidates. We will begin with the candidates' opening statements, and each candidate will have two minutes to present this. Holly?
Thank you, Paula, and thank you for attending, and for those who are watching online, and to the League for sponsoring this forum. I've lived in Sagatuck for five years now, and I retired two years ago. And since then, I've had an opportunity to get involved in the local community, serving on the board of the Sagatuck Dunes Coastal Alliance, serving on Sagatuck's Planning Commission, and, most recently, serving as chair of the Short Term Rental Task Force. These experiences led me to a deeper appreciation of the importance of local government and the role of city council. Sagatuck is a great place, and I really love it here, and I want to do what I can to sustain the qualities that make us who we are: our natural resources, neighborhoods with neighbors, a vibrant tourism economy, and a talented, committed city staff. And I think those are closely linked. People visit and spend money here because it's beautiful, because we're a small town with great local businesses and residents, and there's no question that short-term rentals are an important part of our tourism economy. We need short-term rentals. But neighborhoods with neighbors are also important, and as the number of short-term rentals in my neighborhood has doubled to 27%, the neighborhood has changed. And it's not just the noise and trash and issues that we can address through better regulations and enforcement. I miss having neighbors, and I've heard that from a lot of people, especially those on the hill where one in every three houses now is a short-term rental. I believe that's too many, and I think that now's the time to cap the number of short-term rentals in our residential neighborhoods on the hill and west of the river at 20%, grandfathering all current licenses and renewals, but not issuing new licenses until we're below the cap. This has worked in both Charlevois and Suttons Bay. I can provide more detail in the Q and A, and I've left a Q and A actually on a table there with more information. But I believe that over time, this approach can revitalize our neighborhoods while sustaining strong tourism.
Thank you, Holly. Russ?
Good evening. I'm Russ Gardner. I'm a current -- can everybody hear me? Can you hear me okay? A current member of Sagatuck City Council and council representative to Planning Commission. Tonight, I'm before you with immense gratitude and appreciation. First and foremost, I want to extend my thanks to the League of Women Voters and my fellow candidates. I also want to thank my family for their enduring support and keeping me humble. I also want to express my gratitude to all of you who are here with us tonight and to those tuning in through the livestream broadcast, your presence and participation are the very essence of our democratic process. I'm a lifelong Sagatuck resident. I live here with my wife Jen, my daughter Charlotte, and my father-in-law Charlie. I graduated from Sagatuck High School and have a bachelor's and MBA from Western Michigan University. I returned to Sagatuck full-time in 2020 after spending several years in Chicago. Before moving there, I served with distinction on Sagatuck City Council and as mayor, and also had the honor to serve on the Planning Commission, Historic District Commission, and the Kamauzoo Lake Sewer and Water Authority Board. I'm proud of my current council role, where we have made great progress on repairing the city's streets and improving the city's infrastructure. One of my most visible achievements was leading the effort to save and begin the restoration of a city icon, the Mont Baldhead Radar Station. As a healthcare finance professional and experienced public servant, I understand how to lead with empathy, practice financial responsibility, and deliver results. I respect every individual's opinion, actively listen to constituents, and communicate with transparency. If we elected, I will continue to protect open space and parks, preserve Sagatuck's great heritage, traditions, and celebrations, make public safety paramount, focusing on traffic calming, and making the city more bike-friendly for residents and visitors, protect taxpayers, support businesses, and be fiscally responsible. And I want to foster a culture that values community input and inclusion.
Thank you, Russ. Logan?
Hello. I'm Logan White, and I'm really excited that you're here. Thank you for coming out tonight. I just want to briefly talk about who I am, what I think makes me a good fit for council, and what I think is important for Sagatuck right now. A little about me, I live on Lower Spear down by the Star Sagatuck with my wife Maria and our two golden retrievers, Fern and Fozzie. We've been there about eight years now. I love to canoe, and I'm trying to bring the Film Festival back to Sagatuck. I think a lot of us remember the waterfront and missed that thing. So, the Sagatuck Film Fest is in our second year this November, and I work in marketing for a local ice cream confectioner. One other fun fact is I don't know everything. What I do know is that I'm a curious, hard-working ex-戚, and I'm also extremely passionate about this town. I'm new to government in general, but I'm not new to Sagatuck. While I mostly grew up here, and my family has been here since the '50s, I only bring that up as evidence that this town is extremely important to me. But I think this place is really important to people that aren't from here, too, and I really don't want there to be a divide between those two groups. Independent of where we're from, we all choose to live here now, and that's what's really important. We choose to live here not because it's convenient, but because it's a really special place. And a lot of extremely hard-working, passionate, and creative community leaders throughout our town's history have built something incredible here, piece by piece, and I want to help carry on, carry forward that into the future. There are challenges ahead for Sagatuck in challenges right now, and I'm certain we'll be addressing those together tonight. But I just want to say that what I think is important for us to remember is that we're on the same team, and I think that we can do it. I'm excited about the possibility of serving on council, and also, I'm a huge fan of the candidates who are here with me tonight.
Thank you, Logan. The first question will go to Russ, and that question is -- let me know when you're ready, Russ.
Do you want -- there's another mic. You want the other mic?
Yeah, my mic's on. Yes. Fourth with it.
Thank you.
The first question is, a city council seat is traditionally nonpartisan. Some think that partisanship has crept into our local races. Is this a fair statement? What would you do to address that?
By city charter, the council is a nonpartisan body, and I think that was very wise of the people, one of which is here tonight, that wrote that charter, because politics, you know, Democratic, independent, or Republican, in my opinion, should not reach the city council of Sagatuck. It's a government of business, of infrastructure, and of taking care of our residents. Policies of national concern are, of course, of interest to us, but we are -- it should be focused on those things that matter most to our residents that live and work here.
Thank you. Logan?
I think it's fair to have that concern. I think we've seen political ideology fall into a lot of places we wouldn't expect to see it these days. I haven't seen a lot of that locally. I do think some of the core issues that tend to divide people that identify with those two camps are present here, especially right now, but fortunately, I haven't seen, you know, too much partisanship in that capacity. Yeah.
Thank you. Logan, Holly?
Yeah, I don't think there's political partisanship, but I do think there's some "us/them" that has slipped into public, you know, discourse. And, you know, whether it's old guard, new guard, you can call it whatever, but there's definitely, I think, more division than is healthy. And as I have been running for office, I've spent a lot of time very intentionally reaching out to people who kind of might represent those different groups, because I just want to listen and learn and hear from them, and I'm hoping and appreciate hearing Russ' emphasis on listening, that if we can really hold each other accountable to reaching out, to listening, to collaborating, there's really no reason why we can't advance, you know, Sagatuck, because that's what everybody I've talked to really cares about.
Thank you. The next question, we'll start with Logan. If someone came to you with a proposal to build a new piece of public infrastructure, road, bridge, whatever, how would you evaluate whether that project was worth implementing? Please choose the number-one infrastructure issue facing Sagatuck in your answer, just so that you have an example.
I think my first question would be, where's the money coming from to do this project? And then, after that, trying to figure out who would benefit from it and how large the impact would be. I think a couple of the -- one of the issues that I'm curious about, which isn't particularly exciting, but it is something that needs to be addressed, is our lead pipes in the water, the water system right now. That's going to be a huge problem that we have to face soon. That one, I think, would be pretty easy for people to get behind, so try to look at the impact there.
Thank you. Holly?
Yeah, you know, I would start with the packet of information, the business case, including sort of the financial ramifications, as well as the project as a whole. I'll take Butler Street infrastructure. At some point, the council's going to have to shepherd that through, and it will be a huge project. You know, talking to city staff, obviously, but, you know, I would call up Mark Becken, too. I mean, he probably knows every pipe in town and has 44 years of experience in that area, so I would definitely pick his brain, and then others, who would bring their perspective, both historically, but how you manage something like this. Also, looking at other cities. I mean, I've learned a lot in the short-term rental from talking to other communities, you know, Charlevois, Suttons Bay, to see what has worked and not worked for them. And so, just reaching out, gathering information, and then collaborating with other council members and staff.
Thank you, Holly. Russ?
The city operates on a -- we operate on a strategic vision, which, at this point in the city, is not well-defined, in my opinion, but when it comes to infrastructure projects, the capital improvement project is the key document that we work from to decide where the priorities are. We also have what's called a Pacer Study, which determines the value -- pardon me, determines the conditions of our streets, so we can prioritize the projects that we want to work on. That's used quite frequently when we're looking at new road projects. The lead pipe replacement is a major, major issue, and it's something that the city is now working on. We've engaged a company out of Chicago who's doing a study for us to be able to evaluate what the cost is going to be, and it's going to resolve some increases in our taxes, or pardon me, our bills for our water, to make sure that the infrastructure is replaced appropriately.
Thank you. The next question, we'll start with Holly. Back to the beginning. Describe your qualifications related to budgets and policies and your engagement in local government. Please be specific about your public service on committees, commissions, and/or attendance at council meetings.
So, currently, I'm on the -- I'm a Planning Commissioner, and I chaired the Short Term Rental Task Force, so in terms of Sagatuck City, that's experience I have. I'm also on the board of the Sagatuck Dunes Coastal Alliance, and so, all of those, especially the Coastal Alliance, has significant sort of program management and financial management. My professional career, I worked in corporate communications and change management for years, and so, managed multimillion-dollar projects for a number of major corporations, change initiatives, and I'm a big believer in plan, you know, objectives, strategies, plans, budgets, timetables, and then monitoring those religiously. It's just vital in any organization, and especially government, to really mind all of those details, communicate them forthrightly and frequently to the different stakeholders.
Thank you, Holly. Russ?
Yeah, by trade, I'm a finance professional. I work in healthcare finance. I've been doing that for 30-plus years, and I'm a numbers guy, so I'm kind of a geek when it comes to that. When it comes to city infrastructure and city municipal financing, I've got 10-plus years of municipal finance experience, working with our current city treasurer and also working with our current city manager. And in my past role, I also chaired the Administrative Committee, which had responsibility for managing the audit, as well as managing the yearly budget process. I think the city has an opportunity to open up that process more to the public. There's a lot of interest in the town to do different projects, and I think we could do a better job at engaging our public when it comes to budget items.
Thank you, Russ. Logan?
I am new to government, but I am not new to caring and involving myself in things that I'm passionate about. I serve as the treasurer, and I'm a board member at the U of M Alumni Club of Holland. I'm the festival director at the Sagatuck Film Fest, and a huge part of my background that'll be activating for project management and budget issues is I work in marketing, which is a particularly difficult thing to sell up to your leaders a lot of the time. So, I'm very hawkish on ROI, on making sure that things are buttoned up and defensible, and I think that's going to help.
Thank you. Next question, we'll start with Russ, and it is, what is your position about putting in place short-term rental regulations and enforcement?
Sagatuck has always been a community of what I grew up as calling vacation rentals. It was very common for people to rent rooms in their homes and rent out garages and coachhouses, so that's been a practice in Sagatuck for as long as I can remember. I'm a full supporter of allowing people to rent their properties as short-term rentals, but there's an opportunity for the city to better enforce the codes that we have in place. I think, and I've had an opportunity to read the report, the preliminary report that was released by the Short Term Rental Task Force, and there's some great information in there. And I like to keep things simple. Let's make this a safe, fun place for people to come visit, as well as to maximize people's use of their property when they choose to do so.
Thank you, Russ. Logan?
Can you repeat the question?
Sure. What is your position on -- about putting in place short-term rental regulations and enforcement?
Yes. I am Lower Spear. I'm surrounded by short-term rentals. I know that's something that everybody's very concerned about. I agree that we should update our policies. They're pretty outdated. I don't think when they were originally written that they were prepared for the volume that they would see, so there's some easy wins, some low-hanging fruit there. I do have to try, I have to speak out against caps. I think that there's a much better way that we can do that. I think that's some, like Russ was saying, there are some nuances to what happens in those situations, and I wouldn't want to take rights away from property owners there. At the same time, something needs to be done, and I'm a big fan of policies that look a little softer, like requiring people to own their properties for a certain amount of years before being able to rent them out, or possibly looking at something like that. I think that there are some places that caps could be an issue, but it's definitely something that needs to be addressed.
Thank you. Holly?
So, I spend a lot of time on short-term rentals, being part of the task force. We talk a lot about the rights of people to rent their homes, and I agree. I mean, Sagatuck has a long history of this, and we need short-term rentals. We need vacationers to stay here. But what we haven't been talking about is the right of people to live in neighborhoods. I mean, I bought into a neighborhood, assuming many of you bought into a neighborhood, and we've lost our neighbors. And I think there is tremendous value to that, and I think we need to, especially on the hill and west of the river, get those numbers down. And it's an economic -- it's becoming an economic issue for people who want to sell their homes. The only people who are buying homes in some areas are investors to buy short-term rentals. It's not people who want to move here and live. And so, I do think we need to do limited caps in residential areas.
Thank you, Holly. The next question, we'll start with Logan, and it is, besides infrastructure issues in short-term rental regulations, what do you see as the top issue facing the city? How have you -- and then coupled with that, how have you engaged the city hall or residents to address this or any other issues recently?
Great question. I think that the biggest issue right now that I see from my perspective, I'm coming at this from a very long-term perspective. I love this town. I think that one of the reasons that people drive by other lakeshore towns to come here is that we have a very beautiful and relatively undeveloped riverfront, and I can sort of see, I think, I think it's pretty clear that we see a lot of people being interested in changing that, and I would like to make sure that the character of Sagatuck remains. That's a long-term fight. That's something that we're going to have to do constantly, and you only have to slip one time for something like that to go away. How I've involved myself is I've been going through the Planning Commission meetings on occasion to when I see a project that I disagree with, and becoming familiar with those channels and processes, and I'm a huge fan of that sort of work.
Thank you, Logan. Holly?
Amen to what Logan just said. I think our environment is, you know, the natural beauty, the river, the river mouth, the dunes. We have to do everything we can to protect and preserve those. There's no Plan B, and as a member of the Coastal Alliance Board, I've been working to stop the marina, which would do, you know, it would do harm that we can't undo. I think, you know, protecting the water from development, or, you know, managing any development that happens along the waterfront, trying to get the boardwalk extended so that people can enjoy it more, even, you know, seeing if we can extend our recycling programs. Are there ways to get some composting in? Can we involve restaurants to help them with composting? Making sure the trees we plant are native to Michigan so that we're, you know, creating a more eco-friendly habitat. So, I think that in our neighborhoods are what drive our tourism economy.
Thank you, Holly. Russ?
Yes, is this microphone working? Great, great. I hate having the microphone. Sagatuck is a very fortunate community because of our socioeconomic base here is quite high, and we've been very fortunate to have very stable financial management. However, Sagatuck is a community that is not growing from a population standpoint. We have declining revenues, and we have increasing costs due inflation, as well as projects. It's going to be very important for this council and future councils to be very responsible with the spending of our money, because the bucket's not getting larger. It's either not growing or it's decreasing, and so, we have to stick to our capital improvement projects, and we have to be very careful about which projects we want to prioritize, and we have to comply with federal regulations, especially with the lead water replacement. It's going to be a challenge.
Thank you. The next question, we'll start with Holly. What kinds of policies, if any, will you pursue to promote social -- I'm sorry, that's not the question I was going to ask.
Okay.
Let's start again.
I'll erase that question.
All right, there you go. How will you consider climate change and other environmental issues in economic development?
So, I think in terms of, you know, economic development, a lot of it is tending to what we have and making sure that we continue to invest in, you know, protecting our natural resources now. I do think that we are going to be a place where people move as the climate changes. We're near water, we have a good climate, you know, we have good weather, I mean, especially winters are getting warmer. So, I think planning for, you know, people, climate migrating, there's a lack of affordable housing here, and I think actually that's an issue I hope we can tackle with the Township in Douglas, to see if we can collaborate on creating, you know, housing as a development to serve our workers, to serve people moving in that is more affordable. Most of the people who work in the city today can't afford to live here, and so, I'm hoping, working across the tri-communities, we might be able to get to that.
Thank you, Holly. Russ?
I think that the council needs to lead by example on this, and I've made some attempts at council to try to encourage us to be more sustainable in our behaviors, as well as, you know, I've approached having the council be paperless, be an electronic council. I've led by that by turning down the packets. They no longer print packets for me. I work out my computer. I've actually encouraged the city staff to begin to do that, and I think we need to do more. I think it's the city's responsibility to do what it can within its scope of responsibility to demonstrate that we care about those issues, and I completely agree with candidate Anderson's comment that we are a climate haven in Michigan, and I think we're going to see continued people wanting to settle here, not only for the beauty of the area, but also the stability, and that great big pond of water out there is a very big asset for us.
Thank you, Russ. Logan?
Yeah, it's interesting. I think we've sort of, in the last while, I think we've become out as a, as a climate refuge, which is something that's interesting to think about for the long-term, you know, prospects of our town. As the climate continues to get more aggressive and different, I do, I do worry for those houses that people are building out on the sand a little bit. I think there was a quote in an old book about that somewhere. And we're gonna have to see what happens, but we'll do everything we can.
Thank you. Our community is proud of our first responders, but there are issues with every community. What do you see as the most pressing issues with police and fire departments? We're gonna start with Russ.
On the police side, back in March of 2022, actually, excuse me, it was spring of this year, I actually organized with fellow council member Lawrence Stanton a community and police meeting here at the school. And to introduce the officers, because there's a perception in town that the officers, deputies that are here are not locals, and they aren't, that is not true. There's assigned deputies to our town that are here regularly, they're in the schools. And you just, we need to get to know them. And I think that's an opportunity. I continue to talk with the under sheriff of the county about opportunities to introduce our deputies to the community. On the fire, you know, departments are under challenge, and I appreciate Chief Janik and the work that the board's doing, because volunteer fire departments are, are waning. Many parts of the country, it's a dying breed, and it's a challenge. And I, I really see the township board, or the township fire district, as well as Chief Janik really being on the forefront of this. It's a challenge, but keeping those services available to us, and growing with the community, and adjusting to the flex, and, and being flexible with our community needs from a firefighting standpoint, is, is gonna be a challenge.
Thank you, Russ. Logan?
Well said, Russ. I, I'm a big fan of the recent move to the Alleghen County Sheriff Department work. Seems to be going well from my perspective as a citizen. Something that I would try to focus on is improving the relationship that I've seen develop between our council and the fire board. There seems to be some tension there. I would like to increase the level of communication and make sure that everybody's feeling valued in this community because they do a lot of work, and we need them. Big fan, a big fan of the work they do, and would like to see, would like to see that friction evaporate a little bit.
Thank you, Logan. Holly?
Yeah, I, I echo Russ's point. I think it'd be great if we can find additional opportunities for the, the police officers who serve us to get to know the community more, and for people to get to know them more. Because I do, I mean, they are here, and I think there's a perception that we've lost that local touch. And so I think exploring just simple ways for them to engage more would be good. I'm a huge fan of Chief Janik and, and the work he has done. I met with him a couple of weeks ago, and his emphasis on collaboration with other departments, his commitment to, you know, what they do. So I think helping, you know, support them in what they need. I mean, I, I understand that we, you know, we need to think about whether we need an ambulance since the population is aging here. And I think that's something that's really critical, and the city needs to get behind.
Thank you. We're starting our next question, and we'll start with Logan. I saw there is a proposal to spend $450,000 for a playground at Village Square Park near Bald Head Park. One at Bald Head Park is a higher priority? Or if you could address that issue on, on parks and the spending, and how you would organize that spending?
Great. Yeah, I think what we're talking about is the, kind of just came out today. I wasn't made aware of it, the half a million dollar spend pending on the kids' play park down by downtown. Obviously, that's a really fun thing for people to have. It's great. I love our people come here for our parks. I think Bald Head, it needs some help. We have some, we have some rough facilities out there. I, I would like to prioritize things that are used even more heavily. I think that gets a lot of traffic, and desperately needs some attention. Yeah, I think talking with our community, community members would sort that one out a little bit. I would, I would look to our community members to identify the priorities there, and make sure that the spends are within reason to, on that. That seems, seems to be quite a bit of money. Yeah.
Thank you, Logan. Holly?
Yeah, I, I don't know enough about the proposed park to really comment on that so I can talk about sort of how I approach it. I think just digging into what are the available funds for the parks is most important. What's sort of on deck that needs to be done? And then how do we prioritize it, you know, over time? I mean, definitely looking at the current year, but over the next two and three years. What's great about parks and what's great about playgrounds is it gives people things, with kids, things to do. And we want people with kids to come here and vacation and spend money. I know my niece and her kids were here this summer, and they loved, you know, stopping in the parks and playing. So it is a lot of money, but I don't know enough about where it would fit in and whether we can afford it. And if we can't afford it this year, could we afford it next year? So those are the questions that I would ask.
Thank you. Russ?
Yeah, the city has two priorities from a park and public works standpoint. One is Mount Bald Head, number two is the Village Square. And I have not had a chance to study the proposal, which was in the packet, which was released to council yesterday. So I don't have an opinion about that proposal other than I'm encouraged to see something coming from the Parks and Public Works Committee with all the efforts that they have put in. The Village Square, the last time that the playground equipment was replaced was, I think, probably about 15 years ago, maybe, and it's in sore need. Further back, thank you. It's in, it needs to be replaced. It's, it's to the point of being unsafe. Mount Bald Head, on the other hand, is near and dear to my heart. There's $300,000 that's been set aside for projects at Mount Bald Head. We recently replaced the roof on the bathroom and the pavilion, so just to make sure that's, that's not being further damaged. But that definitely needs some more help. And we have a number of community members that approached me and said, let's do something together, and that's gonna be done.
Thank you. The next question, we'll start with Holly. Some of the city issues require cooperation with Sagatuck Township and the Village of Douglas, as well with the city. I mean, there's collaborative nature there. How would you propose to address some of the issues that are not completely within the city?
That are not completely what?
Within the city, the issues, the community.
Yeah, I, I think understanding how we currently collaborate with them and, and making sure that we do. I mean, we are all essentially one area. Most people don't differentiate between, you know, oh, well, I just crossed from the township into Douglas or Sagatuck. So we do need to look at it holistically. Our master, tri-community master plan is coming up for updating, and I am thrilled about that because the, the last one was written in 2016. And it, we need to update it. And Bobby Gunt and the planning, you know, with the planning commission will be active in that. I think developing strong relationships with our counterparts in the other cities. I mean, just, you know, having coffee, exchanging ideas, information, and then looking for areas where, you know, coming together as three can enable us to do more. And whether that's looking at affordable housing, how we're gonna plan holistically. It's, you know, the fire department, I think, shows what collaboration can do. So anything we can do, we can do.
Thank you, Holly. Russ?
Unfortunately, elected officials change every year in both the township, Village of Douglas, as well as the city of Sagatuck. So what I look for when it comes to collaboration between the communities is collaboration at the administrative level. That's the managers, township supervisor, getting together on a regular basis to talk about issues and topics of concern and interest to, to the three communities. Because I've been, I always have the opinion, as goes Douglas, so goes Sagatuck. As goes this township, goes Sagatuck. We're all interrelated. The tri-community plan is a good example of how that can be done collectively. I also think that there needs to be an active effort to talk more often between the communities. I'm just, I'm, I'm, there's so many ways we can get together, we can talk. We talk at socials, and there are different ways that we get together. But we don't formally get together as elected boards and say, let's talk together. The last one I went to was when Joey Adams was elected. He actually called us together. We met over in the Village of Douglas City Hall. It was great. It was wonderful to see people. We had ideas down. We need to do that more often.
Thank you. Logan?
One example I can think of, of some collaboration a lot like that, that I've seen in this area is the Convention and Visitors Bureau down in Douglas. Come at this from a perspective of during the film festival and, and coming together with other party planners, kind of, and the people who make this place, you know, a really interesting place to live. And they're, they're talking really cross, cross collaboratively, and making sure that their efforts, and these are events that are happening in Douglas, Sagatuck, and Fenville, and that's put on there in Douglas. And it was, it's really nice. Everybody's figuring out when their events can be, how we can pool resources to figure out what's happening. And that's, that's really what it is. I think a lot of people have that interest in, in collaborating. So without knowing the structure of how that's happening right now, my first questions would be, you know, how can we get that going? What, what does that look like? What is the structure of that? What's a good example of, of areas that, what are other examples in Michigan of cities that are working closely together? And maybe we talk to them and figure out how they're doing as well.
Thank you. The next question is, do you support free beach passes for Sagatuck residents?
Is it my turn?
And we are going to start with Russ.
Ah, there we go.
Big smile on my face because I, because I support that idea. As a matter of fact, I've had several former councilmembers that approached me about that idea. And it was brought up to council earlier this summer. And we talked with our treasurer, Peter Stanislavsky, who's been with the city about 17 years. And there was some discussion around what the impact of giving free beach passes to people would look like. And I'm not completely changed my mind because I still think it's a great idea. But there's some financial reasons why it would maybe not make sense. And I don't want to go into details because I'll bore everybody. But it's definitely something that I'm interested in talking about further because I think it's just, it's an easy thing. And I support free beach passes, and we'll have to see if we can get council to do it.
And we've got Logan.
Free beach passes would be amazing. I love that idea. I don't know how feasible it is. I would love to see, you know, I would love to counter with, you know, a compromise of maybe being able to buy a second beach pass at the discounted rate. I know we've probably all had that frustration. And Oval Beach is amazing. We're really lucky to have that. And so if it costs $20 to go there for the whole summer, I'm willing to pay it. But maybe a second, a second beach pass would be cool, too.
Thank you, Logan. Holly?
I, actually, I, I don't support that. Because, one, it incentivizes people to drive, and I would rather actually focus on if we can get more people to take the inner urban. But actually, even more important, I would rather use the money we would spend on that, like the playground. I mean, I think it's a fun, it would be fun, but people who live here can pay the 20 bucks for a, a parking pass. And I think we could invest that money in things that would have longer-lasting impact.
Thank you, Holly. The next question, we'll start with Logan. A strong Sagatuck is good for its schools, and a strong school, and strong schools are good for Sagatuck. Can council do anything to help maintain and strengthen its relationship with its schools?
I think us voting the village through for the schools was a big step in the right direction. I'm very proud that we were able to do that, and continuing to support our school system. I don't, I'm, I'm not gonna add a whole lot of value to that. I don't, I don't know what I can do there.
Thank you, Logan. Holly?
You know, it's, and again, I, I don't have kids in the school, so we'll get the, the dad's perspective in a bit here. I, I think we have a pretty good relationship with the schools. I mean, I think they've gotten good funding from the city. I think a lot of community residents are very active in supporting, whether it's, you know, staffing athletic events, or, you know, parking, you know, the parking lot. So, you know, that's an area where I have, I have more opportunity to learn.
Thank you, Holly. Russ?
I, I don't have a lot of time to talk on this one because I could talk all night. My dad's a retired school teacher. I went to school here. My daughter goes to school here. She's junior, Charlotte. So I'm a big supporter of the schools. I always vote yes on bond issues. However, the last bond issue, I had a conversation with a school board member because I thought they could have done better, and there were some changes made, not as a direct result of me, but that's a way that we can partner better. Just make sure our voice is heard, because everybody's trying to do the right thing. And we need to put our voice out there when we disagree, and, and find ways to do it better. Volunteer for events, that's an absolute must. There's a lot of people that, as was mentioned, volunteer for events. And, and the city also supports the school by allowing the use of the city lot to raise money for classes and for sporting clubs and, and so forth, so.
Thank you. The next question, start with Holly. Sagatuck is a city that continues to grow and change. Are you interested in attracting more residents and businesses to Sagatuck? How would you do this?
Well, yes, I am. Actually, our population has been shrinking, so I'm, I'm very much interested in that. And, you know, housing is an issue. We, and again, that's why I'm so passionate about tackling short-term rentals and getting some neighbors back into the neighborhood so we have people moving in. I know some people think we've already sort of lost the hill and that we aren't gonna have kids playing in yards, and, but I haven't, I haven't given up on that yet. I think, you know, just finding ways for people to afford homes. And if we can look into, are there incentives? Or can we look at some of our, you know, like the firefighters and the police workers? Are there ways we can find subsidies or incentives to help get people to move in here? There's a lot of work to be done. It's not easy to solve that. But yes, we need to get people to live here.
Thank you, Holly. Russ?
Sagatuck is challenged because it's geographically confined. We don't have much buildable property. As a matter of fact, this house is going up in lots that, when I was growing up, I'm like, how in the world is anybody ever gonna build there, and they do. But something that I've seen in the community, and especially as I've gone around and met people and talked about my reelection, there's a number of people, some of them are here tonight, that actually went through properties long-term to people who work in town. And that should be encouraged, and that should be celebrated, because they're making a choice to not short-term rental, which they could easily do. And they're attracting people to be able to live and work here. And I just think that's something that we, there's quite a bit out there that I don't think we, we even know about. Challenging affordable housing is a difficult issue. Excuse me, we don't, the city doesn't control the real, the real estate market, but we can certainly find ways to encourage people to do what I've seen done to just make it affordable for most to live here.
Thank you, Russ. Logan?
I know short-term rentals is a hot-button issue right now, but I really don't think that eliminating them or capping them is gonna be a silver bullet to making Sagatuck suddenly a magical, affordable place to live. If you take away short-term rentals, what I think is gonna happen is you're gonna see housing prices stay exactly the same, and then you're gonna have people buying these houses and using them as second homes, which means then there will be nobody around most of the year, which is, that would be an economic pressure on the city that I don't know if we can afford. We've been here a long time. Sagatuck's done well in the last five years. But before that, I do remember when downtown was not as healthy as it is now. There are, there were a lot more empty storefronts. It's really nice to see our small business owners thriving in this community because those people can afford to live here and have their families here, and we need them. Lot, lot to unpack there, but I really, I really don't know of any strategies that I've heard that can make real estate in Sagatuck suddenly affordable.
Thank you, Russ. Next question, we'll start with, I'm sorry, Logan. Next question, we'll start with Russ. City employees are a terrific asset. Would you support Sagatuck developing a human resources program where there are full-time city employees, where full-time city employees would receive a written annual performance review with morale and job satisfaction? Also monitored by a confidential employee survey undertaken each year?
Yes.
Basically, how do you keep the pulse on your staff?
Yes. The city has a wonderful staff. We've got some long-term employees. Many of you in the audience know those employees. They're around town quite a bit and servicing our, our citizens. The city, as a small government, a small, small organization, has a difficult time having the large amount of services that you see in a bigger organization. However, I think the city does have an opportunity to be more focused on retaining and also succession planning for our employees. People come and go from organizations all the time, and the city's no different. People come and go from organizations all the time, and the city's no different. And when people leave someplace, I'd like them to leave for the right reasons and not for the wrong reasons. So I think we should be very focused on making sure that they are satisfied in their work, that they're receiving regular feedback on their performance, as well as have goals and strategies that they're working under and good leadership.
Thank you, Russ. Logan?
I think it's really important to provide feedback to our, to our city staff. They do a really great job. I've heard several of them talk of they can remember the last time somebody said something really positive to them about the work that's, that's been done here. And I think that not only that perspective should come from our citizens, but also from the structure that's supporting them as the city. I understand that there has been some challenges with exit interviews and kind of building people up in their careers. I think that's really important for people to stay engaged in their jobs is to get accurate feedback. Look, I would look forward to understanding more about what's happening and enhancing that process further. That's something that I do, and my work right now is internal communications, and company culture is extremely important in unifying people as a, as a team.
Thank you, Logan. Holly?
Yes, an emphatic yes. I spent the last third of my career as a consultant and employee. Communications change and engagement, and I'm passionate about it. We do have an incredible city staff. I mean, I obviously haven't worked with all of them, but the ones I've worked with are amazing. And we definitely need, I mean, we need to be the best employer in town or in that area for them. And so that means listening to them. I mean, you look at what drives engagements. It's, it's feeling like you're heard. It's having people who care about you. It's having good relationships with your colleagues. It's having good communication. And so part of that is, you know, goal-setting, regular conversations about how it's going, and then taking the pulse on how people are doing. I mean, is it the kind of culture where people are thriving? And are we developing our bench so that as people do move on to other jobs as they do, we have people to slot into that? And people feel like they have meaningful new challenges to grow and learn, so I am all over that.
Thank you, Holly. The next question will start with Logan. And today's been a very, very hot day, sunny in the eighties, kind of like Fourth of July, and this question's going to take us back to the Fourth. The city overspent the budget on, for July 4th events by $30,000. How would you have spent that $30,000 rather than for a laser light show and DJ?
I'm not going to answer the question directly. I don't, I would have to take a look at, I would prefer that, that money just wasn't spent, you know, and applied appropriately. I think the spirit of that question is good in asking how, how did that happen? I know at my work, if I tripled the budget on something, I would be in, I would be in some pretty hot water about that, especially with those kind of figures. It's just, it's not acceptable. Yeah, got to do better.
Holly?
Yeah, I sort of feel like we're almost to the point of we're beating a dead horse, but yes, I think we all know that the, that was a disaster in, in terms of budget and how that was managed. So again, it comes back to, do you have a good budget going in? How are you monitoring it? How are you, you know, keeping track of it? Dan Gilbert, who is on the east side of the state, runs a lot of Michigan businesses, always had an email signature that said, "Always make new mistakes." So I think, how can we learn from this? And part of it is, I don't know why, you know, the city is planning parties. I mean, it seems like there is a better way for parties to happen than, I mean, we just shouldn't be in the party planning business. There's plenty of other things for us to do, so that would be one way. And I, you know, that's sort of a gotcha question. Who knows where that $30,000 should go? Maybe to the playground. So I'm going to throw all that money to the playground.
Thank you, Holly. Russ?
Fourth of July was an interesting experience. The city should not be in the event planning business, period. It's not part of the municipal responsibility. I would have put that money into Baldhead bathrooms, which need help, and some new stairs over at Baldhead, as well as maybe some new improvements to the stairwell itself. It's very easy to find ways to spend $30,000 in the city on projects that would be of impact and visibility to our visitors and our residents.
Thank you. The next question regards legal expenses, and we're going to start with Holly. The city now has an attorney from Lansing physically present at every city council, board, and commission meeting, even if there are no legal issues on the agenda. Do you think this, do you think this approximately $5,000 a month expenditure is a good use of taxpayer money?
I think we need a legal representation at city council and planning because often there are issues where we call upon the lawyers to weigh in, and I think it's actually more efficient in the long run, and this comes as a former consultant, to have people in meetings where they are, they need to be involved in sort of the day-to-day of what that body does than, rather than to catch them up later. That's not a particularly efficient way. Now, I don't think we need two lawyers at meetings, and I think there are a lot of commissions that don't need any lawyers. But I think it, it's not a yes or no question. It's a, let's look at how, how they're being deployed now. Does that make sense? You know, you don't want to have blank checks for people, but you also, you know, we've gotten, this is a very litigious world we're in right now, and if having a lawyer at council or planning keeps us from a lawsuit, and many of the meetings I'm at, they're attending via Zoom, not driving over from Lansing, so.
Thank you. Russ?
That's $60,000 a year. And that number, that $5,000 a month, was calculated by our city treasurer, so the number's solid. I proposed to council back in June or July, a review of our legal policy, legal services policy. That was soundly rejected by council five to two. The city needs to be evaluating the use of its, of its legal services. And again, there's some legal counsel, there's some legal costs that we have to incur, right? We're under a lawsuit. It is a litigious society, however, I think there are more efficient ways to utilize our legal services than having an attorney at every meeting, public meeting. And I've tried to approach that with council, but have been defeated on that. And I will be bringing it up again because it's an important issue, and we can find better ways to spend that money.
Thank you, Russ. Logan?
I know there's an old saying that an ounce of prevention is worth a pound of cure. I don't think it's a pound of prevention is worth a pound of cure. There's a lot, I would like to encourage them to attend more meetings via Zoom. There's wonderful technology out there. We're all doing it. It's good to hear that that's happening sometimes, but I know it's not happening all the time, multiple attorneys. It seems, it seems like a lot. We can do better. We can do better with that.
Thank you. Next question will start with Russ. The idea of merge, of merging of emotional intelligence and leadership is a huge part of the corporate and academic world. What leadership skills regarding emotional intelligence do you think a bore, a member of the city council needs? And how do you think you display that skill, or may display that skill?
That's a complex question. I would answer that by saying I think it's meeting people where they are and also having a understanding of where people are coming from. You know, it's a skill, I, I can't judge whether I'm good, good at that or not. People will tell me if I'm doing it well, and, and I think I've had comments from people that have said that I do that well. It's meeting people where they are. It's also having some situational awareness of my talent and, you know, listening to people, because not everybody agrees. I hear opinions all over the board, but ultimately, what I have to do is, is say to myself as a council member and an elected representative, I represent every opinion in town, and I have to distill that and by listening to people and meeting them where they are.
Thank you. Holly?
So I, I had a great training, I think, the last year or so of my career, and it was a diversity and inclusion training. And the woman who was teaching it said, you know, whenever you're in a meeting, look around and see if everybody feels like, you know, they belong and that they're, they're heard. And I think, I think emotional intelligence or good leadership, it is, it's listening, it's being aware of, you know, people and whether they do feel like they belong and whether they're heard. I mean, I think that's pretty much what we all want as humans. I mean, you know, we want to be loved, we want to belong, and we want to, we want to be listened to. And I think if we can practice that in all areas of our lives, actually, a lot of the divisiveness and vitriol we're seeing would kind of just, the air would go out of that, and we could just be together.
Thank you. Next question will start with Logan. Oh, did I miss, did I miss you?
I like the theme of listening. I think as elected officials at this level, that's an incredibly important skill. You know, there's not many skills more important than being able to take different groups of people and listen to them and come up with a solution that makes everyone happy, and a lot of times it's not easy or always even possible. In my career, I've found that that's one of my better skills is joining different groups of people that we, helping people recognize that we're all going for the same outcome, essentially, right? We just all have different reactions. We have different perspectives. We have different things, like Russ said, where recognizing where people come from, where, where they're coming from and their path to getting to that goal that we're all searching for is different for people. And helping people realize that we're, we're working towards the same goal is, I think, is a, is a really important part of leadership.
Thank you. You're going to start the next question, too. If elected, what three steps would you take to put Sagatuck on a firmer financial footing?
I don't have a three-step plan right now for that. Firmer financial footing. I'd like to see us, this is, this is too easy, but, you know, not blowing large sums of money on Fourth of July. I know that's probably just not the biggest issue either, but continuing to make sure that through sustainability and, and, you know, make, still making exciting things happen here and making sure people want to be here, making sure this community still has people in its homes, whether they're there for a few days or, you know, forever. Making sure that people are still able to come here, that we have attractive offerings, and that it's a, that's a wonderful place to both live and visit.
Thank you, Logan. Holly?
Yeah, I, I don't have a three-point plan either, and I don't know that I, I know enough about our current finances to, to give an intelligent, a concrete answer. What I will do, would do, is to really sit down and dive into the budget with somebody, you know, with people who know more about it than me, to, to really understand the different ways we spend our money, you know, what the trends have been in the last several years, and then what's on deck in each of those categories, and what the plans are to, in those different areas, what the needs are, you know, for the next two to five years or so, so that you can make the trade-offs sort of in time for the different projects. And then also find ways to better communicate how we're doing, you know, how we're making those decisions, and then what those decisions are, and then how we're doing against it.
Thank you, Holly. Russ?
The city charter actually has a requirement that the city manager present to the council and the community on a quarterly basis the performance of the city from a revenue and expense standpoint. That's something we've asked the city manager to begin doing, and that's coming. That's one way to bring visibility to it, as well as to help council members understand what the performance of the city looks like, too, is better controls. We had some issues around Fourth of July, which we've talked a little bit about tonight. The city council has a responsibility to manage that with the council, or with the treasurer and with the city manager. And three, is really probably the most important aspect of it, and that's a, making sure we are sticking closely to our budget, which we develop every year. We also have that in conjunction with the capital improvement plan and making sure that we are spending our money where we plan to spend it. Things come out of the blue occasionally, but we really need to be careful that we're not spending money on things that are not within our scope and our plan.
Thank you, Russ. So that question was pretty precise and surgical regarding finances. So now the next question is kind of fun. It's fantasy. If the city received a million dollars grant for use in the city in any way, what would you do with it and why? And we're going to start with you, Holly.
Oh, gosh. Truthfully, I have no idea. I think, I think you look at some of the, you have to look at the nice-to-have projects. I mean, probably, you know, you save some for a rainy day. You do something fun. Maybe it's the beach passes or, you know, and then, and then allocate it strategically based on the general needs of the city. It's easier to answer that question for my own life, I will tell you that, for the city. So ask me that afterwards, and I'll let you know.
Thank you, Holly. Russ?
For a city that has an annual $3.3 million budget, a million dollars is a substantial amount of money, but a million dollars doesn't go very far in the public infrastructure. That would go very quickly. I would take a look at the capital improvement plan. I would also put money investment in Mount Baldhead. That is a true treasure, and there are many, there are several projects over there that could use some immediate help. And then I would talk with our superintendent of DPW and our city clerk, and I'd ask them, where do they think they would have some immediate needs that we could spend some quick money?
Thank you, Logan.
A down payment on a new parking structure. It's not, it's not the most exciting thing, but I don't know how we're going to afford something like that otherwise, but it would be really nice. Parking is a huge issue, we all know. I see people get into all sorts of terrifying social situations over parking spots, and I would like to help alleviate some of that stress.
Thank you. We're now going to go to one last question that came in. Lots of talk about making Sagatuck family-friendly. What specifically is your vision? In other words, what would you do to make this happen? And the person who's going to start us off is Russ.
Things immediately come to mind, playground, which is in play right now, no pun intended. And also, too, a passion of mine, I'm a cyclist. For many of you that have not seen me, I ride around town quite a bit on my bike, and I see the town from a different perspective. But what I see, and stopping and talking with people that live on busy roads, particularly Holland and Lake, is that people that are visiting our community are frequently coming in here on bikes with kids. The city does not have a safe environment for people to travel into town and out of town. We should be working on bringing people into town on their bikes, not around town. So I'm going to be actively working with my fellow council members on a project to make Holland and Lake Street more safer for cyclists to come in and visit with their kids and learn how to bike etiquette and so forth. It's, it's a passion of mine.
Thank you, Russ. Logan?
On a similar note, but more pedestrian, we, there are some areas in town that don't have great sidewalks, particularly Park Street. I don't know how we're going to get that done, but that is a dangerous thing that happens in the summer. I'm just nervous about that all the time. I'd like to see us do a better job of keeping forms of traffic distinct from each other, whether it's bikes or sidewalks. Also, just to shout out to the Sagatuck Center for the Arts, they do a lot of wonderful kids programming. It's an incredible organization, and maybe seeing some ways we can further amplify their efforts. I know we shouldn't be in the business of party planning, but maybe just, you know, increasing the cooperation between the government and that organization.
Thank you. Holly?
Yeah, I totally agree on parks and, and bikes and walking. People, you know, with kids love to do that. I think it'd also be fun to, you know, working with the CDB or local businesses, can we package some, some things that get families to bring kids here? So, you know, with, with, you know, classes at the SCA, you know, something with the Oval Beach, but package weekends or long weekends with kid-friendly stuff along with stuff for adults.
Thank you, Holly. I think we've come to the end because we're almost out of time. So we are going to do our, our closing arguments, or not arguments, statements. Wrong venue here. So we're going to start in reverse order, and we'll start with Logan. So we're going to start in reverse order, and we'll start with Logan.
Thank you for being here, and thanks for having us. And thank you to my fellow candidates. I was kind of hoping that you guys would have a little bit more of a choice than you do tonight, but it's, it's really encouraging to see people here, and, because this is what makes this community so vibrant, is our, our locals and the people that care and show up, and I'd like to consider myself one of them. And thank you for your consideration for, for city council. Appreciate it.
Thank you. Holly?
Yeah, you know, I'm going to, I'm going to talk more about short-term rentals because I'm, as you can tell, passionate about it, and Jane is probably cringing as she hears me begin that, but just because she suggested I not harp on it completely, but I'm going to. And I want to just give some more context about why I do support a residential cap on the hill and on the, the west side of the river, and it would grandfather in the existing rice, the existing licenses. So somebody who lives on Pleasant Street wrote into the Short-Term Rental Task Force and said, you know, "Much has been said about the prospective negative impact on property values of short-term rentals are limited. Very little has been said about the negative impact to the value of private residents that are adjacent to short-term rentals." And Liz Engel, who many of us know, a highly respected Realtor, made that same point when I met with her a few weeks ago. "People are reluctant to buy on a block that's saturated with short-term rentals," she said, "which of course makes it harder for sellers to sell those houses, except to people who want to, you know, use it for a commercial short-term rental." And it, and that keeps people from moving to our community, and I, I just, you know, neighborhoods need neighbors. If we did cap those two areas, the hill west of the river, we would reduce short-term rentals by about 50, I don't think that's going to hurt tourism. We've got that new auto camp coming in with 119 sites. Their people could still get new, you know, new licenses in commercial districts. So I think, you know, that's a pretty safe way to go about it. It's working in Charlevoix and Sutton's Bay. It's not, it hasn't changed property values, and it, it's working well, so I think we can learn from them. Two former mayors have told me that they wish that they had addressed short-term rentals when they were on council, and I'm afraid if we kick the can down the road again, we're going to lose two of our most prized assets, which are our neighbors and our neighborhoods. So that's my pitch. I will be working for that on council. Thanks again for being here to Russ and to Logan and to the League.
Thank you. Russ?
I'm really encouraged by what I've heard tonight from Holly and from Logan. I look forward to serving with them on council, assuming everything plays out as we expect. My family's been here since the 1880s, and I bet if I was to be able to ask one of my ancestors what town looked like back then and what it looks like today, they'd be like, "Holy cow, I don't recognize this place." But the, the similarities remain the same, the beauty of the place, the people. The people are what make Sagatuck. The beauty of the, of the beauty of the town is, is, is always going to be there, but it's the people. I love the people. I've been serving my hometown in different ways throughout my entire life, and my commitment to Sagatuck remains unwavering. It's not just a place, it's a vibrant, diverse community, constantly evolving. As a Sagatuck City Council and Planning Commission member, my foremost goal continues to be that Sagatuck is a welcoming and harmonious community that we can all cherish. Over the next two years, Sagatuck will encounter a variety of challenges, spanning from replacement of lead water pipes to comply with federal regulations, to continue focus on our capital improvement plan, to address infrastructure and city operating priorities. Moreover, the looming specter of rising inflation and a declining and aging population, I'm in that aging population, and reducing revenues will surely cast a shadow over our budget. With conviction, I stand as a candidate uniquely equipped to champion your interest on city council. My commitment extends beyond mere debate with my colleagues. I aim to cultivate collaboration and not division. Drawing upon my municipal experience, I'm confident I can continue to be your voice on the council. As election day draws near, whether you choose to vote by mail, participate in early voting, or cast your ballot in person on the big day, I respectfully seek your support. And I kindly urge you to keep Russ Gardner in mind as you check your ballots and you vote. Thank you.
Thank you, Russ. And now's the time, the audience should applaud all their, their work. Thank you. We also want to thank all the forum officials, our timer, Tina Pollak, for communicating with everybody and making these arrangements, and for, for everybody who attended and those who didn't, who submitted questions online or in person tonight, thank you. It's part of our conversation and part of our democracy, so thank you. I'm going to turn the mic back to our league president, Barb Ferguson.
What a great example of civic engagement. I, I think it's great. You were a wonderful audience, wonderful candidates, and great discussion. Thank you to everyone. We hope you've gained some insight into your new council people's positions and what they think about local issues. You can learn more about these candidates by visiting vote411.org. Candidates have responded to additional questions about their candidacy on Vote 411. We'd also like to thank Steve Seacor, who's disappeared, for his assistance in live streaming our program tonight and recording the forum. We'd like to thank Sagatuck Public Schools for making this space available to the League for the forum. A reminder that the video of this forum will be available on our website and YouTube channel in a few days. Copyright ownership of the recordings resides with the League of Women Voters. The candidates and their supporters cannot use the video recording of the forum. Portions of the recording or any audio clips or video clips for political advertising or other purposes without the written permission of the League of Women Voters. Most of all, remember to vote on Tuesday, November 7th. Polls open at 7:00 and close at 8:00. All voters in Michigan have the option of voting by absentee ballot. The ballots are now available. For more information on absentee voting and confirming your voter registration, you can go to Vote 411, to your local clerk's office, or to michigan.gov/vote. You can also visit the League of Women Voters' website, lwvholland.org. We have a lot of information there, too. Again, thank you to all of you for coming and for our candidates. Very good. Thank you.[1783.33]